Okay, starting the stream, folks. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach, held Tuesday, June 1st, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We have a roll call. Councilmember DeLurie.
Here.
Councilmember Mandell.
Present.
Councilmember Trastan.
Here.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Deputy Corporation Council Richard Berrios. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
Councilwoman McGinnis, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. This has been a long time coming, so just a quick show of hands, how many people had to use Google Maps to remember how to get here? So it's good to be back live and seeing everybody in person again instead of through screens or just your names on a screen. And so let's get the show on the road. So why don't we start with the City Managers' report?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome back. I have two announcements before we get into my report. I want to say thank you to the entire fire department. Last week, we had two major fires, and they worked well together. They got the job done, and unfortunately, the two fires were on the exact same day. And so I want to make sure that we acknowledge every single firefighter, whether they are paid or volunteer. They did an excellent job. Also live is Meet the City Manager, so it's no longer virtual. I have, I call it my office. I usually sit outside when it's really nice, on the bench outside. But I, from 2:00 to 4:00 every Tuesday, you can make an appointment to come in and sit down and talk, make the appointment with my executive assistant upstairs, Gina, and we can talk about anything, or you ask questions. I always say, knowledge is power. So when you have questions, it's better to ask where you're going to get the correct information than to hear what's from someone else, which the information may not be correct. So on that, my first person who's going to report is Commissioner Walsh.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all in person for the first time as a group. A couple of things I wanted to go over tonight with regards to Police Department operations. The first thing is, is I want to review the website that we have. The website is mostly up and running now. The only thing we don't have live right now is our statistical data. We've brought in a new thing, like I've mentioned, a few, for a few meetings, called Microsoft Business Intelligence Software, and that is going to be tied to all of our databases and be able to provide up to date, certainly within 24 hours, probably within four hours, of case report data, of our calls for service, and things of this nature on our website. We have right now an area that's now live where you can make a complaint for the Police Department or a complaint with the Police Department. You can leave yourself anonymous on the website. That's reviewed by part of the executive staff and then appropriately referred as well. So if you get a chance to have a look at the website, I think you're finding the lighting. We have a meeting coming up next week with regard to the police, excuse me, the police reform, the Commissioners Council on Police Reform. The City Manager asked us to reconvene this particular group that was formed before I got here, but were the group that actually put together our police reform plan with myself and the staff, the executive staff and the Police Department, with all of their suggestions. And the City Manager will be reviewing what the discussions were in response to some of the complaints that the PVA has made public around town. The last thing I want to bring up is a new software that we're bringing in, and I'm very happy and very proud of this. I've been working on this for a while, and I was able to negotiate a very, very low price for the department. It's a thing called Q Hit. Q Hit is a software that will be brought here probably within the next month that will give us up-to-the-minute satisfaction surveys as to how the Police Department is doing. How that works is when we get a complaint or someone who dials 911, we will be sending them a survey within the next, depending on the rules that we put in place and depending on the type of call. So they will get a survey, they have the right to opt out of the survey if they don't want to take it, but the survey will ask them three or four pointed questions as to how satisfied they were with the 911 call that they received, how satisfied were they with the police officer's response in handling their issue, and then a text field of anything they would like to give to us. And that will be read live data once we get it standing up on our website so that the public will now know, and the administration and we will now know, how the public feels about the service we are providing to the public. All of the, yes?
When a resident dials 911, do we get immediately put to the Long Beach Police Department or do we get to the county?
If you dial 911 from your home in Long Beach, it will immediately go to our switchboard. If you dial 911 from a cell phone, it will go to the Nassau County CBI Operations. They will ask you, they get the address, hold on one second for the Long Beach Police Department, and they will stay on the line until you are actually transferred. So with regard to this Q Hit, you'll get surveys, we will get immediate feedback, and any negative surveys that we have, we will have tasks that are assigned. If any of the comments or any of our surveys go negative, for the administration to follow up to find out why it was negative so that we can improve for the next one. Any questions on anything that I brought up? So that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. So what's important about the software is that it can be rolled out to other departments. And what I try to teach and what we talk about in all of our department head meetings that we are here to serve the public. And in serving the public, you have to give them good responses. You have to hear what they, what they say and make sure that we respond accordingly. Whether the response is a good response, no, we can't do that response, or we'll see if we can check into that response, but you have to give them a response. So this software can roll out to other departments. Thank you. Next, we have Monique Powell from Community Development.
Good evening. First off is the CDBG. So to talk about the Community Development Block Grant is to keep the mission that City Manager has expressed as far as access all, and the only way that we are able to really communicate that is to be transparent on what CDBG is. That's to go over what is the eligibility area. So on the website, we will begin to post what community development is in the eligible areas. So it's just not one specific area, it's all the neighborhoods and the areas that HUD has identified as based on census data as the areas that are eligible to receive any CDBG program funds or anything that the city administers using those funds. So that's the first step, like transparency and understanding that everybody who fits under that area location, whether it's West End is one of the areas, or North Park is eligible for any programs under CDBG. Next is criteria, and that is that 51% low moderate income. So the second criteria of income, and if you fit under low moderate income, you are eligible to receive any programs or services offered under CDBG. If you look at our recent census data from the past 10 years, not continually updated, average income is $92,000. So low moderate income is aggregated less than the $92,000, and those are the individuals that are eligible for our CDBG programs or services. So what we've been doing is codifying systems, understanding the mission, the goals, and the projects under CDBG, closing a lot of them out. It's more of like reframing the department with the people, place, and things that community develop, community development produces or provides. And that framework has now been simplified to youth services, senior services, and adult services. So that is going to be the new way that we're framing, and like I always say, the logic framework model will be based on those three things, what do we provide to youth, seniors, and adults? The next step was then to align our funding, so looking at what Community Development Block Grants provides us. We're at an average of $275,000 every program year. We're in the middle of the 46th year, leading to the 47th year. So completing these projects for four years, spending every dime to a zero, keeping the money in-house, aligning it to the new framework that we just said, because the city is providing services, not outsourcing, it is up to the city to provide community development. That's why it's federal dollars under HUD, and that's why we're giving that. So to understand what that looks like, to tie into transparency with that of who's getting it, how we're administering it, well, I think, as Donna always said, clears up. Accountability is that after every fund that's spent, it has to be towards those criterias that I said earlier. Also, there is something called a CAPEA report that the city has to fill out. That means the city is accountable for every dollar spent. There is a lot of documenting and reporting that needs to be done and a lot of data that must, must be provided with that. So with that being said, one thing that, when it comes to documenting and reporting, after talking to Nassau County, Community Development, and federal, is that there wasn't a lot of document reporting. So the first thing that we did was Submitable. So Submitable is a grant incoming database software that we will be using. There has been a lot of conversations about organizations applying. We have high turnover whenever there's public service and looking for staff email that no longer exists to verify whether someone applied for application. And this is also organization-facing and even community residents-facing. So if someone was applying for residential rehab, which is a prior program, someone was applying for aid, they will all go through what we call Submitable. And this is the software that we're procuring, and where the City Manager, City Council, Comptroller will be able to review, sorry, the intakes, the applications. You will see whether someone's accepted. It is saved over the cloud. They must submit all their documents, they must provide proof that they are eligible for the programs, and we keep it cloud-based, and it was approved by IT. The next thing that we purchased was JOT forms, so we're moving forward with electronic forms instead of a lot of paper. When I first came in, we were doing a lot of shredding and documenting and finding things. So JOT forms, we are doing a lot of our community development forms via that, where you can get a QR code, you can fill out an application and fill it out. And we are doing DocuSign as well, where you can electronically sign a document, and then we can send it up to Nassau County. We want to eliminate the time between having CDBG funds, executing a program, and submitting it to Nassau County. Under that, I'll be quick, sorry, everyone, are a couple of things that we're doing under the senior services. We're looking, we're actually working with Nassau County Office of Aging to receive vouchers for our seniors to use during the farmer's market. We are doing Tech Thursdays, where we partner with a local CBO that will assist our seniors with their technology needs. From our surveys, seniors said that they need to reach out to their family during COVID. They do not know how to work FaceTime or Facebook or what have you, so we have an organization that's coming in on Thursday. With CDBG funds, we purchased Amazon Fire tablets where they can use them, they can learn how to, and even soon rent them out from us and bring, and bring them back. Under youth services, Joe and I was talking, we're doing the voucher. So there has always been opportunity for City Housing Youth to participate in any recreational programs. So we're now going to expand that opportunity to anybody that fits that low moderate income eligibility to participate in any youth programs, and Community Development will copy the same voucher system from, from City Housing and do the same thing. Is it City Housing, I'm saying it right? Public Housing? Thank you. So we're going to do the same thing, where any recreational program, including the summer camps, we will provide them with the same voucher, and they can participate in any program, and this is anybody who fits that criteria, and that is the new voucher system under Community Development, under our youth services. Then next is the Youth Council, so we are working on the Youth Council, where they will come through training over the summer. The goal is to keep kids engaged and youth engaged over the summer. There's no longer summer season, school season, thanks to COVID, it's just keeping kids engaged and active. Finally, we are doing the Leeward Conyers Park Enhancement that's coming up this weekend. We are in the process of getting the community to vote on what enhancement they would like for the park. It's to remove the shuffleboard and, and put some possible young tots playgrounds. And that is everything from community development in a nutshell. Any questions?
Thank you, Monique.
All right, Joe, you're next.
Just like that.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'll try to be as brief as I can.
Announce yourself, because I did.
What's that?
I said announce yourself.
I'm sorry, Joe Brand, Commissioner of Parks and Recreation. The weekend festivities, well, got off to kind of a very hesitant start, thanks to the wonderful weather that we had. But we did officially kick off the City of Long Beach for Summer Business on Sunday morning with our 10-mile race. Donna came down and kicked off the festivities. The race was won in a very wet and cold conditions by a former Long Beach High School hockey player, a gentleman by the name of Jack Mulvaney. So it was a nice feather in the hockey program's cap to finally have somebody who enjoys running for enjoyment and not when they're being chased by a cop. So it was, it was good. Yesterday, we were, we were blessed with some beautiful weather for the ceremony at the VFW, very well attended. In lieu of the parade, it was a really, really nice event, obviously celebrating those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Getting to the beach, beach pass sales are brisk. We launched the electronic beach pass option. It's, it's having, I mean, decent results for, for our first year of launching it. Councilman DeLurie and I had multiple conversations with how we felt it was going to be received and how utilized it was going to be, particularly for residents and season pass sales, proving the old adage that old habits are hard to break. People still enjoy standing online when they, to buy their beach passes, and luckily, we've been staffed at both locations with, with plenty of people there, so we haven't encountered the, you know, the three- and four-hour lines that, that have plagued us in years past. So I have to give kudos to my staff because they've been working very, very diligently with the pass sales and with all of the background work that has to take place with uploads from the electronic ones. I get a frantic phone call at 10:30 at night from some of my supervisors, and they, they can't get through to this or can't get through to that, but they should be commended for that. They've put a lot of work into this, and, and I think the bread and butter with that electronic pass sales, particularly for the first year, is going to be in the daily passes. It's a much, much simpler app to upload and purchase, not to upload, download the app and just purchase the pass. There's no uploading it and minimal information, it's basically your cell phone number. The Recreation Center and the Junior Lifeguards have partnered to offer student-specific pool time for the kids prepping for the upcoming junior lifeguard tests. Scud and Swims programs ended last Friday. They'll be in the pool tomorrow, and they have all of the hours that were normally allocated to Scud and Swim that has been designed to get these kids prepped and ready for their, their program.
Commissioner?
I'm sorry?
That's on a first-come, first-served basis with these families?
Yeah, what we did is we blocked out two separate groups. One is for 10, 11, and 12-year-olds, there, there's an hour for them, two half-hour shifts. We could put more kids in the pool than, than we were able to put in all winter long. It's going to be, the Junior Lifeguards are going to schedule it, we'll staff it, the Scudens are going to provide a lifeguard for it. So it was, it was a collaborative effort on everybody's behalf to kind of get this thing. And then the 13 and older kids will come in the hour afterward. But there's two hours, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and then the retraining courses are this, are this weekend. The following week, we have a full week without the holiday, that the same schedule will, will be available to them. So they should get some good pool time. In terms of events and beach activities, you know, we're, we're still guided by COVID and, and guidelines. To that end, you know, during the week ending May 28th, there were a total of four new confirmed positive test results in Long Beach. Nassau County's positivity rate is 0.5%. The best numbers that we've seen since the pandemic began, and more than 60% of Nassau residents have received their first dose of a vaccine. This is all very, very helpful information and encouraging information as far as, you know, my department's concerned with planning. We sat for the better part of two hours today, just kind of going over, all right, where are we in terms of what's up for the next month and what's up, I mean, this week, and what we're going to be able to pull off and what we're not going to be able to pull off? Happy to report that Long Beach's most popular adult recreation activity, the League Beach Volleyball, is, is taking place as we speak, not without its own fair share of glitches, which is probably going to be the overriding story to this summer. You know, when we originally picked the location for the volleyball area, and by we, I mean myself and Chief Gillespie, we try to find an area that can house, you know, a large group of people. Anybody that's familiar with the league knows on, on some evenings, they get tremendous, tremendous amounts of players down there. Where there's parking, where there's enough usable space on the beach, where we're not going to interfere with the fewest amount of peoples. Add all these things up, and, and we came up with the area by the parking pad at Laurelton Boulevard, and we were going to use Laurelton, Magnolia, and National, and then if we had to string, you know, temporary nets on big nights, we could go a little further east than there. We had some pushback from neighbors in the Lafayette-Laurolton area when we went down to examine the footprint after the emergency lanes put in and started to look around. We're not necessarily in disagreement with some of the complaints that are there. Part of the contract that Mr. Berrios and I put together with the leagues leaves a lot of language that allows for us, at the discretion of the Parks Department, the Long Beach Lifeguard Patrol, and the Police Department, to move things around as we see fit. Part of the reason for moving it a little further west, Scud and Surf was moving one beach west from their normal location. Lifeguard Headquarters is at Riverside Boulevard now. We have, we have to have the ability to respond to emergencies from Lifeguard Headquarters, particularly at night when lifeguards are off duty. So having the amount of nets that normally would house during that volleyball league in that area could be something that may be a life-or-death situation. Again, as the footprint has been rolled out, Chief Gillespie and I have had conversations as, as recently as this afternoon, that we do think we have a lot more room than, than we originally thought. So we'll play out this week with, with where we're at, and if we decide we want to move things around, then so be it, we'll move things around. What else? There are, like I said, Monique brought up the camps before. The camps are a collaborative effort now between REC and Youth and Family Services. We're not looking to duplicate services, we're not looking to compete for, for, for customers. We're trying to design camp offerings that meet the needs of people who are just looking for a place to dump their kid a few hours a day, people who want, who, who rely on it for childcare. And in addition to that, can we provide something that goes even above and beyond that nine-to-five childcare, because there are a number of people who have to have their, their children taken care of before 9:00 AM or, or after 5:00 PM. So we're trying to meet all those needs. Additionally, we've been working with the school district. There's some remedial programs designed to help kids catch up from what was a difficult school year that they're offering before school in the locations that we're offering camps, so they would be able to take care of not only their schooling portion, but they'd also have the ability to, to attend summer camp. The July 4th race is going to happen, the summer concerts are going to happen, they'll begin on July 7th. It'll be nine shows, Wednesday nights, and they will go back to a rotating schedule of east, west, and, and the center part of town. How will you hear about it? Carrie told me if I don't explain this tonight, she'll never talk to me again, but the city recently implemented the use of a new email communication system as a way to inform our residents of upcoming community events and pertinent city news. So keep an eye out for a digital event newsletter in your inbox, and for everybody's knowledge, this is different from the Everbridge Community Notification System, which is reserved for emergency communications and important information such as hydrant flushing or a water main break. And lastly, I just wanted to make people aware that this Thursday, the 3rd, Mount Sinai's South Nassau's Vaxmobil will be at the MLK Center from 12:00 to 6:00. To schedule an appointment for a Pfizer vaccination, please call 516-812-3678. Second doses will be scheduled after the first dose on Thursday, and Johnson &amp; Johnson is also available upon request. Any questions? Yes?
Thank you for your report. Excellent. A very important question for the volleyball players. What time will the bathrooms be open?
The bathrooms are open till normally about 10:00 o'clock.
It's usually 10, but if we need to keep them open, like we have staff there all night, so don't make it cool.
And the, the other, or one thing that will probably, or, or help alleviate some other concerns and quality of life issues, and Commissioner Walsh and I have spoken about this, the parking lots have to be vacated by 9:00 PM. So we've made the volleyball leagues aware of that, and I'm sure there'll be a, a feeling out process at the start of this, especially June, it does stay later, lighter later, but I think they'll get the message that, look, volleyball's over time to go.
And we can't charge for the parking lots?
Yes.
You gotta tell them.
And we can't charge for the parking lots, yes. First thing I thought of, sorry.
Commissioner, how many teams do you think they'll be, and how many nights do you put in?
They, they're, they're big nights are Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They have much smaller participation on Monday and Friday nights. And rather than in terms of teams, we do it more by how many nets they, they put up. So some nights, they'll double up and put up as many as like 70 nets, but on a, on a Monday or a Friday, it probably, you know, you wouldn't see more than like 15 or 20 nets, or, or the weekend tournament play, 15 or 20 nets. Yeah, the posts stay there, and then we actually take the volleyball nets themselves down. You know, they're taken down at the beach entrances, you know, the code calls for 25 feet of space between for people to walk through. And again, if, if we think that the net placement is causing a nuisance for anybody, we're well within our rights to, you know, to move it and put it someplace where it's not, so.
Normally, my last question is, I know you've been very busy. Normally, when do they start playing, and normally, when should they end playing?
Normally, they start around mid-May.
No time.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Yeah, like 6:00 PM to sunset, you know, or their games finish, and then it's just a question of them kind of lingering around and hanging out and enjoying each other's company. But, you know, it's a social event for them. It, it, you know, it is, it's a tremendously successful event, it's, you know, financially, it's lucrative for the city, so it's important to us budget-wise, too, so. You're welcome. What else?
Just another quick question, because as you know, I'm known. Is there a ratio of residents versus non-residents that play?
Hmm, I, I could find out.
I don't counsel.
I mean, we have a tremendous, tremendous amount of non-residents that come here to play beach volleyball, a tremendous amount. But I'm sure everybody in this room has a friend, neighbor, or relative that, that plays it as well. I, I mean, it's, it's well-attended by both and, you know, and successful because of both.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that we do have the two different parking lots. Those parking lots are privately owned, therefore, we cannot charge, and the families do not want us to charge because they do not want the liability. And so several people have contacted the office and say, why don't you start charging for the parking lots, and especially since we got the other parking lot this year on Lafayette. We cannot charge, and if the family finds out we're charging- We cannot charge, and if the family finds out we're charging, they will yank both parking lots from us. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear. The last person that's speaking is Mr. Thomas Kaner, Director of Operations and Public Works.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just touch on the bathroom thing real quick. You know, there's 10 bathrooms, two on the beach, and eight on the boardwalk. They open at 7:00 a.m. and they close at 10:00 p.m., except for if there's an issue where there's an event, you know, one of the ladies out of work, and they'll call one of the supervisors, and we'll leave it open should it need be. The other thing we're doing on the beach is, you asked about the match, Liz. We have, we'll put one at Delaware tomorrow. We actually forgot that one, apologize. We have them at New York Avenue. We have them at Lafayette Boulevard. We have one at Long Beach Road, Neptune Boulevard, and Pacific Boulevard. Those are the locations.
I'm just gonna jump on that because I've heard, I do not live on Delaware. This mat is not for me. Thank you.
No, it's for a family that has, I believe there are three, three kids.
Multiple children, yeah.
Yeah, multiple children that need the mat, so we'll do that, no problem. One of the things we're doing is we're rebuilding new lifeguard chairs. We're gonna build them out of wood. I think there's 24 of them. We're gonna cut them down. The ones that we have, obviously, are outdated, they're rusted. The new ones, we're gonna make them about six foot high. And the reason for that is we'll be able to build the mounts. And then Gillespie's staff, you know, Chief of Lifeguards, they can put them on top. Should there be a storm, they can take them out, put them in the back of the beach. If the mound washes away, we can come back and build the mound. So it's less work, it's like less resources, you know, less machinery. It's just a lot easier. It's something we've wanted to do for a while. And we brought it to Donna, and she was okay with us doing it that way. It just makes more sense. On the front of the boardwalk, the dune, we just finished putting all the new snow fence up. The new dune, it has, if you see, there's like a little mounded front. And it's a snow fence is meant to catch the sand and build the dune up, so it grows out and up at the same time. So it's doing its job, as Commissioner Public Works Joe knows. So every few years, we'll have to put new fence up. We just finished doing that. We put new showers in the West End. The old stand-up showers that were there, they were just, they were outdated, rusted. We was a pain in the neck to get the parts for them. We took them out. We put the same showers that are all across the new walkovers on the boardwalk. And we will be building decks, so when people are showering, they'll be standing on the deck, not in the sand. We should have that done in a couple of weeks. What else we got? At Veterans Park, over in the Recreation Center, we just refurbished the whole bathroom over there. The guys did a great job. They painted it, they power washed all the woodwork, stained it. We did a new ADA door with the closer there. We put all new high hats in. It looks beautiful. Unfortunately, we can't open it for another week because the only part we're not in control of is the partitions. We ordered them. They'll be here sometime next week. So when that's done, we'll be able to open that up. We did all the new backstops on the field. We put new fountains in. I think we put, what, 10 new fountains? They have, they have filters in them, and they have a bottle fill. So it's not the old-school type of fountain where people are actually drinking at it with, you know, it was a good idea with COVID. The walking path, the blacktop walking path, we'll be working with the Highway Superintendent Greg Scott. I think in the, right after the 4th of July, we'll be putting a whole new walking path there. We're gonna pull that one up. It was cheaper to have a company come in and pull it up and put new down than for us to try to patch it in. So in the chair, it'll probably take about two weeks to do that. And Joe will tell you about the pool and everything else. And what else we got? What did I miss?
Cleaning of the city?
Yes. We went through the whole city. We did Park Avenue, the West End, the East End, all the beach approaches, cleaned everything up. Weeded out all the gardens. Anything that was dead, pulled it out, mulched it. We'll be finishing the West End tree pits. We did the West End turnaround. The Welcome to Long Beach signs and the sign out here for the food market. We have a company that's gonna come in, and they're gonna refurbish the whole sign for us. When we get it, we'll put them back up because they're outdated, they're beat up, they're falling apart, they're all plywood. The signs we're getting now, it's a composite material, so it should last twice as long, and it's half the price of the old one.
Rest of the cleanup?
What's that?
Weed cleanup.
Oh, Donna loves weeds. She told us, water them and let them grow. So, yeah, we pulled all the weeds out in every spot.
Donna has a very green thumb.
Oh, I know. She was out there pulling weeds with us. That means I gotta get out there and do something.
It's where you see the cars parked on the angles, there are weeds growing. All those weeds in the next month will be removed. Where you see dead bushes, where you see cars parked, those dead bushes have to be removed. I want people that work for the city and people that live in the city be proud of the city, which means that we gotta keep the city clean. So once we get it to the point we want it, then it will be much easier to maintain. I want people to be able to park their car and not see a weed about this tall in front of their car. I want them to just be able to park their car and say, look how clean this is. So I've been walking with the staff throughout the entire city, looking at where we need to clean, what we need to do, what we need to paint, what we need to replace. And then we go to Joe and say, okay, now find us some money and capital projects that we can get this done.
Yeah, we're in the process, and like Donna said, there's a few dead trees on Broadway. We'll be pulling all those out, mulching the area. And then we'll, this year, we'll be returning to planting flowers. Well, it's a little late now. We'll do what we can. But in the fall, we planted the kale, you know, it's the green, and the purple is beautiful. So we'll have money in the budget for next season to plant flowers for the spring. And then we'll do, this fall, we'll do the kale. So it's a nice look, and it keeps, you know, all the trash and everything that gets stuck in there. It's nice. It looks real good. And we'll be painting the Martin Luther King Center. We temporarily patched the roof over there. We have a contractor that gave us a price. We'll have to try to find the funds to repair that. But in the meantime, we temporarily, we had a contractor come in temporarily, repair the leak in the roof. Replaced all the ceiling tiles. And we should have the paint this week, and we're gonna paint the whole outside of the place. And then the Highway Department did a great job. The concrete was a little sketchy over there. They pulled everything up, put it all down. It looks beautiful over there.
It does. It went by.
So I think, and then that's it, right? I'm gonna say it there.
All right, good. And just, I'd like to just thank, for those of you that have come into City Hall this evening, you may have noticed that it's how clean it is and the new paintings of former politicians and mayors in the hallway where they should be, so everyone can see it. And I'd like to thank you for your staff and time for that as well.
Well, thank you. They do a good job. They try, so.
I have a quick question about...
Yes, sir.
Do you probably have done the Pacific Playground?
Oh, you're right, yeah. Yes, Pacific Playground, there's an issue there where, when one of the contracts they put the equipment in, they didn't put, they didn't put the concrete down that deep. So when the wind blows, it was exposed in the concrete, which is obviously dangerous, you know, to anybody, especially the kids. So the Recreation and Maintenance Staff has been in it every day, making sure that it's covered. The fence blew down. It was a chain-link fence, and it's, you know, there's high winds over there. So we took it down, and we built a two-by-eight fence. So we don't have that issue anymore with the wind blowing. We will address, you know, we're gonna have to, in the offseason, we're gonna put some, like, some rubber around it for now, so nobody can get hurt. And we'll address it in the offseason. We'll have to dig it up and just do it the right way.
I think that addressed some concerns that the mayor had.
Yes, definitely. You're welcome. Any other questions?
No, sir.
So I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware, we have money in the capital budget. So as we're trying to do beautification within the city, it is money that has been sitting there for a while. And we have identified this money and what we can do with it that was in the capital budget. And we are using it to beautify the city. Because we know we will have people putting on social media, oh, they're spending money for this, they're spending money for that. This is money that the city already had, and we're putting it to good use.
You mean somebody would complain in Long Beach?
Thanks.
No.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no questions, that ends my report.
I keep hearing from people listening at home that some of the microphones are not on. They mentioned Mike and Karen, so just, I guess, check your microphones.
I wasn't mentioned? I'm shocked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So that ends my report.
All right, thank you. And I believe Councilman Delory had something he was gonna talk about.
I just have something to talk about briefly. On Saturday, May 1st, the Long Beach Lions held a Zoom Bingo fundraiser. The purpose was to raise money for a family, for a young boy, Tyler Lipsky, in need of a ramp and the installation of a chairlift. I'm happy to pass on that they raised over $6,000 through bingo and private donations. And I'm gonna lateral it over to Councilman Mandell.
Thank you, Councilman Delory. In addition to that, on Thursday, May 27th, the Long Beach Lions had their annual scholarship in which they awarded to Long Beach High School student Julianne Robinson the amount of $500. In addition to that, the Lions also presented Robert Blau, who's the president of the Long Beach Soup Kitchen, with a check for $500. So we appreciate the Long Beach Lions. Thank you.
Okay, and...
Wait, before we end, I just wanna also mention that June begins Pride Month as well as hurricane season. So please get those two go-bags together and Sam, Sam Stare, you can look at the Long Beach website, LBready.gov, and get any information. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on that issue as well. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, I can't see Councilman Delory from up here, so if he starts dozing off, somebody please let me know so I can throw this at him.
I'm sure the cameras will point that out. President Bendow. Or you.
All right, so why don't we move on to the agenda?
Item number two has been taken off the calendar for tonight. So we're gonna start with a public hearing for a resolution granting waiver of all-street parking requirements for premise 154 East Park Avenue Street Floor for a holistic alternative product store.
Okay, are the, and I didn't even have to ask.
You know, we're excited a little bit. It's the first one we're doing.
So tell us a little bit about your business.
Well, my name is Edward Janusa. My other half over here, Mackenzie Coughlin. We started a company called CB Trees back in 2017 in my little one-bedroom apartment in Miami. And now have successfully got several products out into mass distribution. We're signed with a few mass distributors. We're proud to say we're gonna be on Amazon the next couple of months. And we happened to fall into the opportunity of getting a little storefront in my hometown, born and raised here. And we'd like to see what we can do with these products that we've been branding and developing over the past four years and really put our ideas all under one roof.
Okay, great. So when you say holistic products, I mean, I see the paperwork says you're talking about some clothing and stuff and...
So primarily what we use, the company is called CB Trees. We are a CBD hemp-based company.
Okay, so it's CBD products.
However, that doesn't limit a lot of our products. Getting into this business has taught us to brand and really get into the vegan lifestyle. We're a little all over the place when it comes to certain types of products, but it's only because certain distribution wants certain types of products for their outlets. For instance, we have a complete alternative cigarette brand. It's a 20-pack of cigarettes. It's 100% nicotine and tobacco-free. The blend of hemp that we've sourced, Mackenzie and myself have toured farms over the past three years. The blend that we have with a little bit more money and research behind it, we're showing to actually successfully fill the dopamine release that nicotine and tobacco gives you and releases in your body, thus pulling people off of it on a chemical level and giving them a better alternative product, all the way to our vegan spice line, which in the next two months, hopefully, you'll see in all the King Cullens over here, cross our fingers, and we'll be out there. So from that to creams and balms and anything in between, it really turned into what we can brand with the sources we've had. And now we'd like to take it and put it all under our own roof and have all of our own products under our own brand, rather than just here and there and distribution lines we've built up for other products out there.
Okay, and just for the adification of the people listening, this is the old hair tanning salon. It's a few doors east of Stevens Pasta on Park Avenue. So just so you know where we're talking about.
Apparently, there used to be a little vape store in there, I was told. I was in Florida at that time and Oregon for a little while as well. But apparently, that was there. And I'll tell you this, there's a lot of foot traffic over there. There's a lot of good people, you know? So we're really excited to see what we could do.
Sort of near the Codfish, the new Codfish Cowboy location.
Yes, yes, right next door.
Right, so...
You'll see, we'll have that front window glowing soon, 100%. We don't play when it comes to that. We like to be loud and proud.
Not too loud.
Not too loud, not too loud, but you know what I mean. You know what I mean, appropriately proud.
All right, so just looking at the paper, so you're gonna be six days a week, Monday to Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Sundays are for pasta.
There you go. And you don't expect, it looks like you're not expecting much in the way of deliveries?
Nope, nope. We supply everything that we do. So deliveries are not a problem at all. We don't really have much to set up when it comes to the actual space itself. I don't think we should take up much room. I think it's just gonna be very sharp, clean, and efficient.
Will you still be selling products on a website?
Yes, absolutely. You can check out our website when you guys are done. We are having it revamped because we would like to get all of the products on there, not just the highest sellers that we've had. And it took a little bit of time and money to get this all in order. But you can check it out now, just so you could read a little bit about what we've done, where we've been, and a little bit of where we're headed as well.
Okay, great. Any questions from the other council members? All right, here are none. How about from the public? You gotta...
Please come up to the microphone and give your name, please.
Mr. Depper.
You have to, you have to state...
Can you please come up to the mic and give your name, please?
Can you come up to the mic, please?
State your name, please, please, publish your...
My name is William Depper. And I was asking him, does he have, like, crystals? Because most of the people I know, they're into, like, the crystals and, like, different sounds. So is he gonna have, like...
We approved that shop last week.
Cassettes and stuff like that? Or is it just basically CBD or...
So you're meaning more like knick-knack crystals or the crystallized form of CBD? Crystals itself. It's a great idea to put on the shelf, thanks for the idea. I didn't plan on it, but I might. Anyone else? I'm more than open to talking about it. We have a lot of knowledge in the industry, so if anyone has any questions at all, please feel free to ask.
All right, any more questions from the public? All right, seeing none, let's close the hearing. And why don't we move that item now, so he doesn't have to wait for the results?
Okay, so we're gonna vote on the calendar item, which is item number three, which is a resolution granting waiver of all-street parking requirements for premise 154 East Park Avenue Street Floor for a holistic alternative product store. Who introduced or moved the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendow.
Yes, and welcome and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. Item one is approval of minutes of prior meetings of April 6, 2021, and April 13, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
I just have one question before we do that quick. The 13th meeting was a special meeting, but the opening sentence of the minutes say a regular meeting of the city council.
I can make that correct.
Is that okay? Okay.
So do you still move as...
What's that?
Do you move the...
So I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendow.
Yes.
Item two has been taken off the calendar. Item three has already been voted on. Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement for the furnishing removal and installation of a new PVC pool liner for the Long Beach indoor pool from the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, I'm assuming that's our Public Works Commissioner?
Yeah, good evening. I'm Joe Fabrizio. I'm the Commissioner of Public Works. This resolution is to award replacement of the PVC, of the contract of the replacement of the PVC pool liner at the Recreation Center. On October 29, 2020, we received three bids for a placement of the PVC pool liner at the Recreation. The low bidder was Renesis Corporation at $114,250. The second bidder was Natare Corporation at $140,025. And the third was Aquatic Dynamics. Their bid was $357,747. Renesis is the same bidder that completed, successfully completed, the installation of the pool liner in 2013. So the liner is now about eight years old, and it's ready to be replaced again. So therefore, we recommend awarding it to, recommend awarding the contract to Renesis. Our intent, funding for this resolution, just so you're aware, it does list on there that it's through the capital budget. However, there is funding through the CDBG program to fund $100,000 of this project, which unfortunately just didn't come through yet. I mean, Monique could elaborate a little more on that if need be. But funding ultimately will come from the CDBG program. It's just being fronted, so to speak, through the capital budget. When we do this work, I apologize. Does someone have a question? Okay. When we do this work, we're gonna be also repairing the balcony in the pool area. There's an issue with the balcony that's in, you know, a state of disrepair, so when the pool's... So when the pool's closed, we're going to actually undertake that work as well. And that's pretty much it. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I just have a quick... About how long would it take for the lining in the balcony to be done?
It's about a month. It's going to take about a month.
When do they anticipate starting work?
It's probably going to be in the next six to eight weeks. It's about a monthly time for the liner, and that's why it was important that we get this on the agenda.
Joe, this was also budgeted in the previous year's capital budget? When I printed it out for $80,000?
I didn't see that, actually.
Yeah.
But I'll check on that.
I remember that because it was supposed to happen before COVID.
Yeah.
So that was 80 grand. So I don't know if that was tied up with the prior fiscal year CDBG funds, right?
That's probably... That's possibly what it was.
Okay. So then in this current year's capital plan, you have it budgeted under the city funding, and then you have it budgeted from non-city funding as well?
Correct.
So it's budgeted twice?
I think...
And is that just because of timing?
Yes, that's basically what it is.
Okay.
Essentially. It's $100,000 of this project is going to be funded through the community developed block grant program. I put that money in the capital budget at the city controls request because it wasn't available yet.
Yeah, it's because it's cash. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, I have one question. What is the lifespan of a pool liner?
It's about eight years. Eight to nine years. So we're right at the useful... End of the useful life of the liner that was installed in 2013.
Okay. And then if some defect occurred prior to that, would you know if there's a warranty on there?
There is a warranty, but I don't know the duration of the warranty. I'll find out for the new installation.
I'm just curious.
Absolutely.
Sometimes if it's eight to 10 years, if there's any benefit for extended warranties or things like that. I don't...
No, that's an excellent point. I will check with Renesis to determine what the warranty is on the new liner and if there are any extended warranties that are available.
And if there's any particular maintenance issues that need to be maintained going forward?
Right.
Not that you would handle that, but sometimes there's certain vacuums or certain issues that have to be adhered to in order not... In order to extend the lifespan of a liner.
Correct, like certain maintenance.
Right.
For instance, absolutely. Yeah, I understand.
Thanks, Commissioner.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
All right. Any questions from the council members?
That, you know, sometimes things are not communicated to the people that have to... But they're responsible, you know? Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Any questions from the public?
Hi, guys.
All right. Now we get to see you in person.
I should be charging, right? Mike, I'm glad you asked the question because I went through this with the state when we replaced East Bath House Pool with the liner. And I remember the... Before we replaced the liner, we had tile. And as you made the flip turn, of course, you cut your foot every time. But what was our warranty on this liner when we put it in not that long ago? And if you look up liners, pool liners, it's average a 25-year warranty. It's a limited warranty, but it's, you know, we're talking 25 years. You look at what's, you know, the... An average pool liner lasts without anything, it's 10 to 15 years. So I'm kind of surprised at an eight-year lifespan, and I'm kind of surprised what we had as a warranty.
Keep in mind, I did not have any consultation with Mr. Lester. I think I'm... I've learned how to think what he will ask.
About time, Mike. It's about time.
It's about time. I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Lester?
No, no, it's just the warranty. It wasn't that long ago. Let me tell you, though, when it was put in eight years ago, what a godsend. It was just wonderful. But I'm just surprised, and I'm kind of curious, because, you know, if it's a manufacturing defect and the warranty doesn't really apply and we can...
That's exactly my question. What do we have to... Sorry.
Are you saying great minds think alike? Is that what you're saying?
No comment. That was my concern, is how and what should we be doing to generate the long-term benefits of a pool liner?
Yeah.
Because I certainly don't know that, and I don't know if there's any experts here that do. But to have a consultation with the manufacturer to train those people that maintain it...
Do we know what the warranty is on the new one?
I do not.
Okay. No, I'm asked about the old one. What was the warranty on both of them?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Thanks, Elijah. It's my son back there. Can't leave him alone with your sharks.
Any more questions from the public? Okay, let's move on to the item five.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement for rehabilitation of the Long Beach Bus Garage and commuter parking facility.
Yes, this is a change order for Carl Walker Construction for the city/Long Island Railroad parking garage in the amount of $16,858.14. The change order for this is actually $91,858.14. However, there's a contingency in the contract of $75,000. So after exhausting that contingency, we need an additional $16,858.14. That's where that number comes from. So the change order is actually 91. We need $16,858. This change order, it's basically solely related to an increase in quantities in the contract. If you want me to, I can go through them all. I do have them listed if anybody wants that information. But overall, the original contract value was $729,285. With the change order of $16,858, the new value is $746,143. So this basically represents a 2% increase to the overall contract value, which is, for a project of this magnitude, is, I think, reasonable. Funding is available in the capital budget for this. We borrowed probably about, I think, about $1 million for the project. So between the consultant fees and the construction fees for Carl Walker, we're still going to be well within budget overall. We'll actually probably have money left over to pay debt service when it's all said and done. And that's pretty much it. I do have a detailed breakdown, if you want. I can go through it of what each... What the change order is specifically, like each item in the contract, if you want me to go through it, or if the public wants me to go through it.
Will the change order add time to the project?
It will not. We're still on schedule to finish by roughly July 1st. It's going to be open again. There's one item. It's called shear connections. Basically, where the two slabs connect, there's a shear connector and approximately... They estimated 230. It estimated being 372 that had to be... They don't replace them. What they do is they actually put, like, an angle underneath that connects the two slabs together, instead of repairing the actual shear connector that connects the slabs together. So those slabs are... I mean, those connectors that... Or angles that they're ordering are on order, and they can do them from underneath after the facility is open. So they're still on schedule to open July 1st. But these extra connectors that they need to put in, which is part of the change order, are on back order, and they'll probably be in four to six weeks, mid-August. But again, they could do that when the facility is open from underneath. So they should... To answer your question, it's not a delay in the schedule.
Now that the COVID restrictions are being lifted and more and more people are probably going to be going back to work, I'm expecting more people are going to be looking to park. Will there be any opportunity to maybe, like, partially open, like, the ground level on the backside or anything? Or do they still need that for work?
I think they're looking for a complete opening. I think they're looking for a complete reopening.
Okay.
They're just about done with the majority of the work. The last thing you're going to see is a complete coating. They're resealing all the joints up there. So they're going to put a whole new... It's like a polymer coating with new striping. So there'll be no more leaks underneath. It won't be raining in the facility.
Oh, that'll be a nice change.
And they're on schedule, you know, by July 1. We should be in good shape. It'll be opened up again.
All right. Any questions from council members? All right. Roy, I see Roy's grabbing the pew, so he's...
It's easy, you know? Not deserting them. It kind of reminds me of the Indiana Firehouse, you know, where they go in and they say, "Oh, well, we didn't know about this. We didn't know about that." And I know we put a contingency aside. And was it 10% we put aside?
Yes.
So a little bit more than 10%?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's eaten up already. So if we have anything else, it's more than eaten up.
That's it. From what my understanding is...
Promise?
I... Ninety-nine percent.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we can get, on our bidding, a little bit tighter on the specifications so that people don't come back to us every time and say, "Oh, well, we didn't know about this, or we didn't know about that." Well, listen, you know, and when I take a case and if I say it's going to be this much money and I don't know about it, shame on me, you know? And I'm just trying to... If we could tighten it up in some way, and I guess, Joe, that would be, you know, if something... If there's anything you could do, because it seems to happen a lot.
Just to mention, this change order from the contract started out, I have a question for approximately $300,000, right? Through negotiating and all, you know, basically really winding down, and then by work with them, we got down, so it was pulled out.
It was really muscle, right? You brought some muscle in?
We did. Yes, we did. And I have all the information on the change order for us now.
No, I'm just... You know what? I see the consistency. And I'm trying to avoid it.
Joe, can you come up to the mic? Because the people listening online can't hear.
And this mic as well.
Yeah, and yes. In this situation, again, the shear connectors that hold the slabs together, until you remove the caulking in between the joints, you can't see them, even though a lot of it was already gone from years and years of decay. So there is a lot of unknowns to this project.
That's... I'm trying to, you know, if you're good enough, you'll know the unknowns. You'll look at it carefully.
Excuse me, Commissioner Fabrizio? And when you do construction projects, what's the average percentage that you are supposed to add to a contract for change orders?
10%. I feel comfortable with 10%.
10 to 15 is what I'm used to.
2% is very good.
Exactly. Thank you.
This was a million-dollar contract, you said?
$729,000.
Oh, so this is 10%. So wasn't it 2%?
Well, 10... No, the contract value is $729.
Yeah.
So it's 2% above the $729. No, no, but the contract is 7... The contract is $729. The actual value now with the... Over the contract value is only 2%.
It's like the $60,000.
Yeah, it's correct.
Oh, yeah. $60,000.
The $75,000 is part of the contract.
Okay. Because it's put aside for screw-ups. Theoretically, theoretically, when you bid the contract, you don't bid an extra 10%. I mean, you put 10% aside, but if you say, "I'm going to the store and I'm buying a loaf of bread for a dollar," you don't say, "Here's a dollar 10." You know, you give them the dollar. We contracted out for $729, right?
That's the contract. That's correct.
Yeah. And then we put another $75,000 aside.
No, 16...
$16,000 is on top of the $729. That's how much above the contract value.
So the $75,000 was...
It's part of the $729.
But we had a contract to pay them, not the $729, the $729 minus the $75,000. Yeah, $650. Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, all right. So we had a contract for $650.
No, the contract is $729, but it includes a $75,000 contingency.
So we automatically put a contingency?
I have the discretion, without coming to the council, to spend that $75,000. Anything above that is why we're here today.
But if they had completed the contract and nothing had gone wrong...
It would have been $650,000.
That's what I thought. All right, thanks.
You're correct. Yes, on that point.
Joe, just one quick question. Since, you know, there is periodic maintenance that's required and upkeep on the garage, and the parking fees are what is supposed to fund that, should we be putting some of those fees in a lockbox to let it build up each year so when we do have to do work on the garage, there is a kind of a fund in place?
Absolutely. That's absolutely... Maintenance is critical. And one of the problems, you know, this facility was built probably in the late '90s.
Right.
And, you know, we have done minimal maintenance over the last 25 years at the facility. And we... Going forward, as long as we do routine maintenance, you know, we won't have to spend this kind of money.
Yeah.
Like, some of the basic things that we noticed when we were up there, every single drain, you know, was clogged.
Is that something?
So that's something where, you know, I've talked internally, you know, we're going to make sure we have a conscious effort to do that periodically.
Yeah, anybody who parks in there was aware of the condition.
Yeah, but even plowing, like, you know, we should use rubber plows instead of plows with a steel bottom.
So, maybe that's something to discuss with Ina's.
So, there's a lot, there are a lot of things we could do.
We've already discussed it, it's set aside, it has its own profit center. So, whatever we bring in for the parking garage is identified, so when we spend money for the parking garage, that's where the money comes from.
Okay. Any other questions from the public? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item six.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for hazard mitigation work at the Long Beach Ice Arena with the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, this is the, this is the second of 11 hazard mitigation projects through the FEMA Public Assistance Program. We've completed one successfully, which is the West End Community Center, this is the second. It's in the Ice Arena Hazard Mitigation. It's bids on Thursday, March 11th, 2021. We received two bids for this project. Premier Building Renovation was the low bidder at 912,500. The second bidder was Structural Preservation Systems at 1,793,200. The scope of the work for this project, a main component of this, which is really a coup for the city, we're gonna be repairing the structural defects in the east exterior corrugated wall. Right now, if you go down there, it's actually, it appears that it's almost like collapsing upon itself, you can't even open the new doors that we put in, because the weight of the structure is coming down on it. It's pretty interesting the way they're gonna actually repair it. On this east wall, they're gonna actually cut all of the corrugated steel above it, and they're gonna actually brace it, and they're gonna build a foundation wall under it, and that will be what holds it up in the future. And we had dealt with FEMA, and our consulting firm basically said that it was latent damage from Hurricane Sandy, and they are gonna fund that whole repair on the east side. In addition to that, they're gonna be replacing all the double doors in the front of the facility, there's three sets of double doors. They're gonna be putting, it's a polymer reinforced fiberglass wrap around the whole perimeter of the building. Basically, what they do is they put a, they put a stucco, sort of, like a mesh against the material, and then like a stucco over that, and then they put a polymer fiberglass reinforced wrap around the whole building. Plus, they're gonna be putting in a stop block system at each entry slash exit around the whole building. And FEMA, it's 100% funded by the FEMA Public Assistance Program. It's called the 406 HMP program, and Premier Building is the company that you see out doing all the work on the Housing Authority. Apparently, they're reputable, our consultant checked their references, and this is a great project, and it's 100% funded, and we'd like to get started right away, so I recommend moving forward. Thank you.
All right, any questions from the council members?
Yes?
Go ahead, Karen.
I was looking, I noticed that the account numbers for this project start with an H.
Correct.
Right, so I think that this is a separate fund called FEMA Fund?
Correct.
And that's separate from General Water Sewer, Debt Service?
Correct.
Right. Is there any, we can start getting some financial reporting on this account, on this fund?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Anything you need from me, or anything, yeah, Ina and I work collaboratively on all of these. We do, but we do have approximately $3 million in the capital budget that is designated for, it's like disaster recovery or these FEMA HMP projects that we're gonna be doing. We didn't borrow the whole 3 million either, we only borrowed about 1.5 million, it was supposed to be for this project and the MLK. Unfortunately, the MLK project came in, it was estimated about 700,000, it came in about 1.7 million. So, right now, I'm working with FEMA to try to get them to approve the additional money, so it's gonna be on hold, I would say, for at least, you know, a good year, unfortunately, till next, maybe next year.
I'd like to see it probably on like a quarterly basis, because it's, it is a capital fund, and there's so many ins and outs that you have to deal with, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
No, no problem, thank you.
Commissioner, could you just explain about the sump pumps?
There's, actually, that's great that you've mentioned that, because that's another aspect that they're gonna be putting in at the Ice Arena, sump pumps, that I didn't mention before.
Okay.
They're putting in sump pumps in case there's a flood or something.
High water table.
We have a stop block, stop block system in there, it'll pump the water out the side, I mean, like, out from a higher elevation.
And the, the roof drainage is going to connect with that sump pump, or is that just...
That's, that's an interesting question, because right now, we put money in the capital budget, $800,000, to address the defective roof at the facility.
Okay.
And I think we're gonna have to look at that, the roof and the gutter system as part of that project, because we never really solved the whole problem with the gutters on the side. FEMA wouldn't pay for that component, because they were already, there's a lot of documentation showing that they weren't, they weren't there.
Just trying to figure out.
That's a great point, though.
I, I just, the second highest bidder was a million seven?
Yes, and, and that's interesting, because I questioned the contractor, he happened to be the low bidder, premier on the MLK as well, so he bid very high on, on the MLK, relatively low on the Ice Arena, thinking he was going to get both bids, and I called him before we awarded it, to make it clear to him that we were only awarding one, and we had no guarantees about the second bid, but he definitely, he was the low bidder on both projects, and...
Have you worked with this contractor before?
I have not, I have not worked with him.
I understand your concern.
So, but I, I did check with the Housing Authority, apparently, they do, they do decent work, and the price is right.
Price is definitely right.
The next bidder was like 1.7 million.
Yeah.
But no, all indications are that they're, they do satisfactory work, I don't, I don't have any reservations at all.
Would you have the same contingency in this one as you did in the, uh...
Um, I don't know offhand, I have to look, it's usually, it's, it's gonna be in the 50 to 75,000 range.
Okay.
It depends, I mean, we use 10% as a rule of thumb, but if it's like a $5 million project, I won't, I wouldn't use 10% of 5 million, I would use a lower number.
Right.
Depends on the scale of the project.
Understood.
For the, the dollar value of the project.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Thank you.
Joe, the, the hazard mitigation, are they gonna be Dutch dams? The, the stackable?
That, yeah, they, I call them the stop block system, but yes, yeah, that's what, that's exactly what they're doing.
Okay.
So, generally, you know, and this building has a lot of entryways and exits, so we'll have to have a container on site where they will deploy them in the event of an emergency.
And then the wrap is, I assume, watertight, then, the wrap material?
Yes, they call it dry floodproofing, but yes, it's a, it's a wrap that goes around the perimeter.
Okay.
It's about three or four feet up.
All right, any other questions from the council? Seeing none from the public? Roy, we just, we should just get you a chair and leave it there.
Real simple, um, you know, Mike, like you brought up, 800,000 for the roof, 900,000 for this, and we were talking about an RFP, and, and I think you said, Donna, that they initially, I remember these people came down, there was a whole presentation, you did a work session on it, and it really went nowhere, and you said that they were looking for us to pay them? And there are no other RFPs out there, nobody, nobody wants it?
We don't have any other RFPs out there for anybody to take over the Ice Arena.
Yeah.
This project was a part of the Ice Arena, it was all the art, because we knew we were going to have the money, and we were not selling the building.
No, I know that, but...
And so, no, we are actually going to regroup later on, taking care of Ice Arena, making sure that how it's run, and that when we get someone in there, they understand that it's them running it, they're not...
And they're maintaining it, right?
Right, but to a certain degree, they will maintain it, because it's the city's building, the city's building. However, we don't want them to come in to run it, and then we pay them to run it.
Hell, no.
So, so, right now, we just have not done an RFP, after we get halfway through some of the...
Because I remember their presentation, it was like, you know, "This is so great for the city," and stuff like that, and...
Yeah, but we're paid for it.
Yeah, well, they didn't say that. Thanks.
All right, any other questions from the public? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item seven.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into two agreements for temporary parking fields.
All right, who's, is that you, Rich?
I think so. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, great. My name's Rich Barrios, I'm deputy corporation counsel here. We kind of alluded to this a little bit earlier, the two parking fields, one on the foundation lot, the other over on Broadway by Laurelton, are owned by the Alpert family. We've managed to do a lot of hard work to get those lots back. These, this resolution basically authorizes us to enter into those two agreements to use those lots as temporary parking fields, the authority to do that's in Chapter 15 of the code. The rules are pretty straightforward and simple, between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM, you shouldn't be on the lot, if you're on the lot, you're gonna get ticketed, you'll probably get towed. Just one point of reference, because of the inclement weather over the Memorial Day weekend, we had a carnival scheduled as an addendum to that agreement, we may be working on a rescheduling of that to this coming weekend, I'm just waiting on the paperwork for that, but this is, this is essentially just two agreements to use those lots as temporary parking fields, we don't charge for it, they don't charge us for it, and it's, we're glad to have the lots back.
It's gonna keep people from parking in front of our driveways and things like that, so, yes, it'll help. Any questions from the council? I think we just need to acknowledge the work Donna and Rich did, working with the, with the Alports, to be able to get us access to these lots. Had we not, I mean, that, especially the foundation block holds a lot of cars, and those are people that would have been looking on the streets for parking, which means I would have been calling the police again, because people will be blocking my driveway again, and, so, this is a good thing. All right, any questions from the public?
John, first of all, if you think this parking lot's gonna stop people from parking in front of your house, you live in the West End, you're nuts. Okay, just a real quick question. The, tonight, we're giving you authorization, so to speak, but the agreements were entered into May 1st, how do we, is this a retroactive authorization, or is it...
Well, yes, it is, in the sense it's retroactive, but, talking to the Alports and all the work that we have done.
Oh, it's great, I'm not sure, that's...
We had to say, yes, we want the lots.
Yeah.
And we knew that these seasons, well, it was coming through, we had to work through all of the agreements, because what I said to them, I will only put cars on that lot, because the reason they put the fence around it in the first place was because people were putting other stuff on the lot without approval.
Right.
And so, everything had to be right, I, I don't take my word for it, I wasn't taking their word for it, and so, we had to work through the agreements. And so, that's what took the long, is to have everything in the right order.
But the agreements were signed on the 1st, May 1st, a month ago, and now...
Did we sign them? Yeah.
Well, it says on the portal. I love your portal, by the way.
I'm sorry?
I love your portal.
I love the portal.
Sure, you know, but on...
All my transparents.
Yeah, on the portal, it says you signed them on, on May 1st, and then tonight, we're giving you the authorization to do it, which to me was a little backwards, but, um...
Sometimes, we in the city have to make agreements, and it doesn't cause the city anything.
No, I'm not saying that, I just...
The judgment was that I could go into the agreement right, but I bring everything to the council.
And then it, well, they're all, they, they're not authorizing the agreement in this resolution, they're authorizing you to enter into an agreement, so they're not voting on the agreement that you've already entered into. Right, yeah, but we are responsible if someone gets hurt and stuff like that. Now, we're self-insured, you know, and, and, you know, they have no liability, we carry all the liability. Do we have extra insurance for this particular, for these two lots of... Well, we don't, we don't have insurance policies under, like...
They are, but you are, but they are added to our insurance.
Right, they're added...
No, they're...
But Donna, what I'm saying is, we're self-insured, and at a certain point, after the self-insurance, and I think after about 800,000, Rich, you would know this.
I think it's five.
Then, our insurance covers up to 4 million, and then after 4 million, the insurance doesn't cover it anymore. But in this particular case, do we have any, did we purchase any, like, for the carnival, they had to buy insurance?
Right.
Okay, did we purchase anything like that for the city, or are we just doing it under our self-insured stuff? Ouch, okay, thanks.
All right, any more questions from the public?
William Depper again, I have a question about parking in the, by the beach pass trailer. Wasn't there supposed to be like guys there to, because there's just two stop signs to say, "Do not enter here"?
Mr. Depper, can you just step to the microphone?
"Do not enter here," but other than that, the cars are just hopping up on the sidewalk to get a spot.
There's a lot, right, there's, we're too empty.
Yeah, but there was like nobody, I was shocked to see, even see people, I didn't even know it was starting today, the beach volleyball, and they're so packed, I mean, I'm sure it's gonna be a mess, but the point I'm trying to make is, the toll booth there, there's a little toll booth there, that I noticed last weekend, the big windstorm, it shifted the toll booth onto the sidewalk, and it hasn't been addressed yet, but I've seen it already flip over. So... Okay, and are you gonna be putting more garbage cans over in that area?
Yes.
With the, you are, okay, all right, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions? All right, seeing none, move on to voting.
Okay, on to the voting, and we'll start with item number four, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the furnishing removal and installation of a new PVC pool liner for the Long Beach Indoor Pool from the lowest responsible bidder. Excuse me, who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement for rehabilitation of the Long Beach Bus Garage and the commuter parking facility. Who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for hazard mitigation work at the Long Beach Ice Arena with the lowest responsible bidder. Who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
And finally, item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into two agreements for, for temporary parking fields. Who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
I'd like to thank city manager Gayden and all her hard work, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin?
I, too, would like to thank Ms. Gayden and Rich Barrios and the Alpert family for allowing this to happen, and I vote yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Will make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Okay, on to Good and Welfare, so you get three minutes, and, oh, Dave moved the sheets to the back, all right.
Can I just say how nice it is to hear everybody laughing? We're always on mute.
I, I just wanna say, it's good to see everybody here, and, you know, having Zoom meetings is just not...
Okay, like this, basically.
...what a good public dialogue is, in my opinion. I personally learn a lot from questions that come up, and it's good to see everybody, you know? And I miss everybody, yeah.
All right, so first, and I don't know how many he put in the box tonight, this, Roy Lester.
I'll try to be quick, and Ron, I guess the first one is for you, Police Satisfaction Survey.
Roy, can you just talk and, thank you. I just want people to be able to hear you.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do.
How much is that Police Satisfaction Survey costing us?
Well, the retail price is about...
Now, you're sounding like my wife.
Sixty thousand dollars per paying 25,000.
You saved money, the stress, you saved money on it, okay, Ron. The, Donna, and this one's for you, on the public, on the reports, the reports are great, a little lengthy, but they're great, but, you know, the public could...
Did you just say lengthy?
Yes.
Yes.
It would be great if the public were allowed to ask questions about those reports, because, you know, the, the reports bring up questions, and, you know...
Hey, I'm glad, can you hear me, Dave?
This is not coming off my throat, Donna.
Yeah, I know, he stops it when I speak. I understand you're saying the reports are very lengthy, but prior to me getting here,
Yeah.
the city manager was the only person that speaks.
Oh, I remember.
And the city manager doesn't do all the work in the city, and so, the residents need to know who's working for them, and what the projects they are working on, so it may be a little lengthy, but it's informative.
It is informative, yes, that's why I say, it'd be great if we could ask questions about it. Charter, you know, I spent six hours today for question number two, very annoying. Anyway, but the charter is almost impossible to navigate, you know, it doesn't have an index, anything like that, the other part, the codes have an index, but the charter doesn't.
Okay.
And so, you have to scroll through the whole thing, and it's just really, if you could change that, it'd be great, a lot easier. And Joe, this one, Joe Brand, you had said that the, as far as the beach numbers are concerned, we're still dictated by COVID. In what respect are we?
Well, that was geared more towards events, beach events and beach activities.
And what are the rules now, because I can't keep track?
As far as beach and capacity?
No, it's, well, capacity and events.
Okay, I mean, the events are, there's different distinguishing guidelines for different types of events.
Yeah.
Outdoor gatherings limited to 500 people. What dictates a gathering from a sporting event, because then there's different guidance for outdoor sporting events, so there, you know, there's different sets of rules for probably almost all the events that, that we, that we have down here, and it requires us, with the state, it requires us with the National Health Department, defining what those guidelines are, and then obviously making sure...
Good luck with that.
Yeah, it's hard.
All right, so, right now, it's 500, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. That's it?
Thanks, Roy.
And by three minutes, huh?
Yeah, thanks, Roy.
Can I put them in the bank?
All right. Mr. Hodge.
Greetings, President, and greeting council members, greeting to our city manager. I come to you and ask and say that we actually take a moment. I heard nothing about or saw nothing on the City of Long Beach site about the atrocity that took place 100 years ago. Sometimes we say Black Lives Matter because if you don't tell your story, nobody else will. And so, one of the number one atrocities that happened in this country, where a city was bombed, was in Tulsa, Oklahoma. There have been many massacres, but that one, I believe that we should have a moment of silence during my three minutes. James Hodge, 95 East Fulton Street. Let me reintroduce myself because sometimes it seems like many of the city council members and the city administration have forgotten who I am. I'm a man that's been in the city of Long Beach for 44 years, 23 years working for my great city, over 80 awards from federal, state, local, and even many organizations. I thought I've tried to do what I could do to be that role model, that young African-American man in the community. Never been to jail, never had a sip of alcohol, cursed about five times or 15 times in my life. Ask all my friends and anybody that know me. Joined every organization I could to help out, was a great part of the auxiliary police here in the city of Long Beach. I've worked very hard to make my mother and father proud who's in heaven. And I pray that I'm making them proud now. My mother and father came from Alabama, poor, worked very hard and taught me how to work. That's all I've done. Tell me, what have I been, what have I done to try to go out and feed people from Nevada to Maple, from the bay to the ocean, during Sandy, volunteering all my time, and then during this pandemic, one of the first people to wear a mask because I have underlines and found out, which I thought I had cancer, but I have an autoimmune disease. So tell me, tell me what, what do I do? What did I do wrong, having seniority in more than most of this city, so proud that we finally found an African-American that can be city manager, that can show that black people are smart, too, and then only to be fired after working with her a few times? So even if the city manager don't know me, this city council know me because I've been here 44 years. And I've given back. I've done what Mrs. Oldham and the MLK and my father and mother taught me. And I say to you that if you don't see that you're wrong, God sees and hears every conversation. And I pray that I'm doing God's will, even when the doctor, and I finish up with say this, even when my cardiologist told me that I'm risking my life doing the distribution, told him if I go, I go helping my community. So again, I finished saying, what is good in your eye? If I've been giving back, doing what I'm supposed to do in my community. Thank you for your time. I will continue praying for you, no matter how you do me. God judges me for how I do all of you. God bless.
Okay. Thank you, James. James, I just want to say, just as I said at the last meeting and meetings before, you pray for us, we pray for you. And God sees everything. Don't, I'm a Christian. So just as I came here, I came here as a woman who had credentials to sit in this seat, who happens to be black, and know that I see what's right and I see what's wrong. And so, don't ever think that just because I'm black, I'm going to pick one race over the other. I'm going to do what is right. So when you stand there and say, me, myself, as a black woman, who did not see what you have done, I said to you last week, the last meeting, that I appreciate everything you have done. I applaud you for everything that you have done. You know that we don't talk personnel issues, but week after week, when we have a meeting, you come up to say that you were let go. So if you want to come to my office and meet with myself and Richard Barrios so that you can understand what the layoff process was, once again, I will be so glad to meet you. And you, and to start out the meeting, I tell you what we'll do. We'll have prayer. Thank you.
Well, like you said.
You're done. That's it.
The thing is.
That was your time, James.
I have 23 years in. So the layoff process, I understand, getting the budget right. But how did I, with seniority, get on that list?
You know how you got on the list.
James, so make an.
I don't know.
So make an appointment to talk to Donna.
I'm just saying, I'll make an appointment, but it's wrong. Donna may be here another year or two, and then she's gone off. She will do her job and completing her job, and then she'll go off. This city council has an obligation to understand what's right and wrong. 23 years?
Okay. So.
23 years I've served, and I'll continue serving because I serve unto God, and I serve the people of this community. I'll serve.
Okay. Thank you, James. And Ms. O'Leary.
We sure.
Okay. Jay Gusla.
I will all of that.
All right. Eileen Hessian.
I just have two short things. One is that I hated being on Zoom. I'm so happy to be back here again. But during all that time with Zoom, I didn't complain about it. I was happy that we had that, and I was grateful that you considered the problems that we were having, and you were safe rather than sorry. So thank you for doing the Zoom, and thank you now for opening this up. There were some people who did complain vastly about why we didn't have meetings in City Hall a long time ago, as if it was some nefarious plot against the city not having it here. And the funny thing is, as I look around, those complainers aren't here tonight. So who knows? The second thing I want to do is thank President Bendo and this entire administration for keeping up with those illegal overpayments, trying to claw them back for us, because after all, that is our money. And I'm very grateful to all of you for keeping up with that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jim Kirkland.
I, too, am glad to see everybody back. I'm glad to be here. It's nice to see familiar faces again. But the thing I wanted to talk about was, you were talking earlier about beautification of the city. Well, one of the things I notice as I walk around, that a lot of properties have, you know, hedges alongside the sidewalks, and they extend maybe two feet out into the sidewalk. And sometimes they have trees, and they have branches that are so low, even I have to duck. So, I mean, you know, it's, it's something that's very apparent if you're walking down any of these streets. But I don't know if the city has, you know, anybody who's responsible for, you know, just constantly beside you, walking around and seeing just exactly what needs to be addressed.
We're going to start walking and with the building department so that they will start making the routine so that they can go to people and say, you need to do this for your lawn, you need to do, like, the trees if they're hanging over, things like that.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that because I do take a lot of time on my own property, so.
And we're going to start a beautification commission.
Oh, sounds good.
I, it's my understanding it was one here before. And so, and they took pride in what they did. So we're going to look into starting that again.
Okay, very good. Be happy to hear that. Anyway, thank you. Again, welcome back.
All right. So that's, that's a wrap, folks, for our first get together again. And we will see you again in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.